Getting some warrants approved. Uh, I'd like to start with payroll number ninety-four for two thousand and three dollars and fourteen cents. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this warrant. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Right.
All opposed? All right, I'd like to propose that we approve accounts payable number ninety-five for eleven thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars and fifty-four cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
And all in favor?
All right.
All right, and the reason that one is the amount it is, is this time we went ahead and paid some of the outstanding donations that we had committed to way back in last June. So we just took care of those since they were requested, and also a big request from the transfer station. All right, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of April twenty-fourth select board meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, and citizens issues, I know.
Did you get the executive session?
All right, um, since one of the people is here who is going to talk for that, I'd like to start with the Dennis, you had a request that you brought to me this morning.
Yeah, this is the recommendation for the board to consider. The digital tax maps that we prepare annually and that CAI posts electronically on their site is a tool that many agencies within the state utilize and many other private contractors use for surveying, for hunting purposes, for navigating the terrain. And for many of the towns that CAI supports, CAI provides those digital tax maps to the main Geo library. And once they're in the main Geo library at the state, then those files can be requested by other agencies. A couple of examples that I'm familiar with. Our hot stand is an app that hunters use when they want to explore where they're going to set up to hunt in the season, where they might want to put up a stand. They can go on this app and they can see where the property boundaries are. So they they know what homeowner they should make a request to for permission to hunt. So that's one application. There's All Trails is another app that uses it for people that go hiking and want to know kind of where they are. And if they need to ask permission to walk across somebody's property. And finally, surveyors use it as a way to get a rough idea of where properties are. So when they go out to do their survey work, they start and generally get the right area. So in any event, we have not given permission to CAI apparently to provide that information to the main Geo library. And it would be my recommendation that the town consider authorizing CAI to provide that information as we update our maps. Aaron Weston has been our contact at CAI. And he's also on the board of the main Geo library. And I know he's our point of contact here in town for our work. If we would simply provide him the authority to provide that information, it would be very useful, I think, to a lot of people in the community that are using these tools. It's also important because when we did our, our our sea level wise analysis back in two thousand and fourteen with the county, they, they requested that data. We and the Shippuden Valley Conservation Association provided that data. And that's the only data they've ever been allowed to use. So the data that's in the state's website is currently two thousand thirteen and fourteen vintage.
You know, if that's, if we've ever requested that before and it's just been turned down, or we just have never made the request?
How do we make a request? I asked Aaron what it would take, and he said, all it takes is the town will make a request and authorize them. They're happy to do it.
I like it.
Any thoughts, Richard?
I'd like permission to go ahead and get through bids on replacing the roof on the right house.
Yeah, hang on. Before I get to your issue, I was just, let me finish with, I thought you had a comment on him.
No.
No, 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 I'll, I'll get to you in just a second. Yeah, I, I, I would like to, was your hand raised, Julie?
No.
No, okay, you just held your head up. Okay, um, I'd like to make a motion then that we authorize CAI to to share Westport Island's data. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, so I guess what we would need is just to maybe send him a copy of the minutes, or do we need to send like a little official letter? Or send him an email?
I'm sending an email. I've got contact information for Aaron that I can hand to you.
Okay, so if you could take care of that for us, we'll go ahead and send that on to him. Okay. All right. Richard, now.
I'd like permission to go ahead and get three bids for replacing the roof on the right house. Those shingles are probably forty years old.
Are they still there after last night?
Couple of half-tail, you know, third shingles are missing, but.
Yeah, I, I really appreciate the fact that you've done a heck of a lot of work on that house. So I see no issue with that. You?
Well, the only made question, Richard, is what type of roofing material are you thinking?
I'm thinking thirty-year shingles.
Like the architectural?
Yeah, the architectural ones.
Which don't last thirty years. I know, because this is my second go around.
And then repair of the flashing as necessary. You know, the stain pipe would need new flashing.
Around the chimney.
Yeah. Make sure they strip it, Richard.
What?
Make sure they strip through. Don't want them shingling with the shingles.
Oh, no. Where were they all shingled in? See if there's any repair. And the spec always played ice and snow covering as well underneath the shingles.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the is it the ferry landing committee, whatever the name of your committee is? Right landing committee to, to go after three proposals and then bring those back to us. So do I have a second?
Sure.
All in favor?
Right.
All right. That was pretty easy, huh? They were all that easy. Anybody else in the audience? I have one more item that come up. All right, so this one is an item that came up actually Saturday while we were at the pancake breakfast. People were looking at the basketball court on, there at the, at the town hall there. And if you've been there and you see where the basketball court, the basketball hoop is, actually it's bent forward. And then there's a big bump where the rim is, right, not the rim, but the pole is. So I've had a couple of individuals offer to fix that without any cost to the town. I was told that both kids and adults like to shoot baskets there. And there really isn't at this point in time anything else that's available. So I'd like to to, to see if there's any issue about them moving forward with that. As I said, it would, probably what they would do is if they can't fix the hoop that's there now, the pole, is they would take that completely down, put up a, one that actually moves. So they could adjust it depending if they're little kids or bigger kids. And also move it so that where it is right now, if you miss, not that anybody would ever miss shooting the basket, but for those who miss, it goes down the hill and into the woods. So what they would do is put it off to the side where it faces actually the, the town hall. So any thoughts or questions about that? Any thoughts?
My only, that was, do we have any new information about the recreation committees? Possible ideas about that area?
Whether, well, that would be one of the things we'd want to have fixed anyway. We wouldn't. There is a committee that's working on trying to put together a playground area. And we're still up in the air whether it would actually be there or not, because I know there's some pushback, but either, in either case, we would want that still to be there. There's already all the, the concrete that's there, so it's just a matter, let's fix it and use it. So that would be my thought. So Jim and then Bailey, Jim?
I just want people to keep in mind that there's that basketball prepared area, the basketball behind that is the subject.
Yep, yep, we visited that Saturday.
Somewhere on the, looking at it to the right is a subject tank. So for a playground, there's not a lot of real estate there.
Yep.
Unless, if, if the town we own was cleared there.
Yeah, yeah, we actually discussed that Saturday, trying to look at what's available. And depending what we put up, it may be that that we have something that could be easily moved. We're meeting tomorrow to start to look at the results of the survey that we conducted.
Not against the playground by any means. They could have space, and there's not a lot of space there.
Yep, yep, yep. We're not looking at a huge playground area, but we are looking at some for, for kids and families. Yep, yep, yeah. And actually, as I said, we were there Saturday and before we did anything else, we would definitely one, we have to go in front of the town and do a whole bunch of other stuff, but so I'm not, I'm still looking at this eighteen acres that we own. I want to find out more about that. There evidently on eighteen acres, it's right off of the main road. So I'm curious about that. So I'm still thinking that. I go by it all the time. So thank you for that, Jim.
I'm happy to take you for a hike up there. I've been up there several times.
Ah, is there any flat land?
Not much.
So one of the kids on Saturday, when I said, geez, there's some hills here where the subject system was, their first response was, good, let's put a slide there. And I thought, great, that was exactly the right response. So but yeah, that's something that I, I have seen. It's pretty, pretty rocky there. Bailey?
In terms of the, about to go look at the town hall, I have treated it for the port itself, for the moss. That was making it pretty, I mean unbearable in terms of playing. And I did buy a new net for the hoop. So however that works out, I have a new net as far as the hoop itself goes. And I have plans of getting, I'm bringing the bucket truck up later in the season. I was going to just haul it down, but.
Yeah, actually, what, what we're thinking is take, taking that entire pole down because the pole is crooked. The basketball hoop is crooked. And if they can't fix it, and this would be somebody who knows what they're doing and would fix it. Again, this is no cost to anybody. It's just, actually, one of the individuals who was there says he brings his granddaughter to play basketball there, and it's just not a good setup right now. So I told him I would bring it to the town, and if, if that is okay, that what I'd like to do is make a motion that we let that little subcommittee fix up the basketball and that area, not doing anything else other than just where that basketball court already is. Make it new, do whatever they need to. So do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
All right.
Just to come in on that line on Saturday, some good Samaritans put up a new basketball net on the hoop.
And that was. Yes.
Maybe if, you know, that got a little bit more advertisement as a basketball area.
It was.
Not adjustable, but.
Yeah, yeah, it was the same individual who had, I had the discussion with, and he told me he was going to go do that. So great that he did it right away.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So we have two little basketball areas, but you know, again, that's just not enough for, for especially younger kids. So we'll, I'll move forward with that. I'll give that information to the sub team and let them work on that. So if you see anything happening at the town hall, they're going to be working on, on that, that pole. Yep.
I have one more question. How much, how much acreage is the town hall or is the town looking for, for a playground?
Um, it really depends on how much equipment we have, which we're just going to start looking at actually tomorrow night. I would like to see at least an acre or two. And you know, the, the town hall is perfect because there's already parking there. We talked about the ferry landing because it was a beautiful area there, but it was concern from parents because of all the water there. And also, you know what happens if you go on a day when everybody's clamming or worming, you can't even find a parking spot. So you don't want a bunch of kids running around with that happening. So those are the two places we've looked. We're hoping somebody will hear this message and volunteer to give up some of that property. That would be the ideal. So if you know of any property around, feel free to contact us, because we are still sort of looking. All right, um. Our next thing is a budget review, and we have been doing this for those of you that haven't been here before. Jeff, it's been.
As you remember, we actually do the committee reports.
You want to go to committee reports? So that the harbor committee can actually go home and have dinner. All right, so we're going to jump to the committee reports. And this week we have, we've invited the harbor committee to come. And so we have Ted Christie, who's our harbor master, and Dana Falkingham, Chair of the Harbor Committee. And would you like to tell us a little bit about what you do and start there?
Well, from my viewpoint, in our committee, we did a lot last year. Because we proposed a new ordinance that went into effect through the after-town meeting, and everybody approved the ordinance as well. The big item that was in there that may be of interest to people is the fact that now is a mooring thing. And that all came about as a suggestion from the select board. Because the harbor master was always paid through the general fund. So we were asked to go back to the table and develop a plan. Some harbor master was paid through the moorings. And so in, in the ordinance now, it states that there's actually an annual mooring thing. Now, harbor master Mr. Christie has developed, I believe, a plan to get that payment. So I just want to be sure from my committee's standpoint that test covered. That's the biggest issue I have. He works at, he covers this island well. And I want to make sure he gets the money that's due from the mortgage. So in the, in protest was an issue that I had, and I never really saw an end to that or a procedure, let's say, of how he does that. So I think you've developed that.
Yeah, we have the new revised mooring application available online now, which has a checkoff box for, you know, renewal of existing mooring or checkoff box for a new mooring. And is at the bottom of the application is also a checkoff box. If there's no boat this time, there's a space for registration numbers for boats. If you're currently registering a boat, if you don't have a boat, there's a checkoff box there. If there's no boat at this time, some folks are concerned about, I don't have a boat. You know, the pill something on that in that section is we must make sure of the checkoff box. Don't worry about that. You know, not every year somebody has a boat in the water. You know, things change them over time. So the checkup box for that. Figure received. I mean, thirty or forty applications in so far. A few people called or emailed. It's a simple question form. So no, it's going pretty smoothly considering it's the, you know, first run through on it. And probably next year, I'll change the application slightly, I think, after everything we do this year, have a checkoff box, maybe simplify things up, you know. Like we move forward, no changes, so that continually provide all updated information. If nothing's changed, something simplify that. But beyond that, I think we'll be pretty, you know, pretty well stable from that point on for years to come.
So to answer Dana's question, do you feel good about the number of applications and feel like you're, you're
Yeah.
that that's working for you?
We don't really have any, I don't have any budget requests. There already has been over the years. I'll see you in a quarter. I think there's one thing I mentioned about being providing and sharing with the fire department, a marine spill response kit of these in the fire department if there's a recall, if there's an incident on the water. Gas or oil spilled like that, I could have a kit specific for that, for that incident. Oh. Beyond that, I don't anticipate any budget like as a request. And I'm looking at, it's probably about two hundred and twelve moorings or hardly registered. I mean, there's probably a hundred and thirty or forty, you know, people that have mooring applications on file. Someone had more than one mooring, so it bumps it up to a total individual mooring of two hundred and twelve. So that should more than be sufficient for providing the budget to pay the company expenses annually on the harbor master side, which is just stipends what maybe a thousand dollars a year. The fees to harbor master association, also at three or four dollars a year going forward. So and at ten dollar annual fee is pretty, pretty reasonable. I mean, if we're just going around, unless someone's still not charging for it. So I'm, I'm pretty satisfied going forward. Most efficient fund in a position for years to come without any changes.
Great. Just from the mechanics, what's the time period for that annual? What is it? Is it calendar year? Is it seasonal?
It runs usually in the due by May first with a no penalty, no penalty after by April, by December, August first. So due date, actually beginning of the year, hopefully people's got to be encouraged or probably ping with emails again. And then we had these set deadlines in the new ordinance for, you know, due by May first, but no penalty as late as August first for renewals. And you know, it's just, I'm not pushing on, I'm more, more important to get the updated information on the moorings in the system or certain, concerned about somebody missing a deadline on it. Just happy to have the, the applications on file, updated contact information.
Out of curiosity, you, you're hoping, you, you still have that, you have like a master list, you, you kind of captured all the mooring information, we had moorings. And, and so you will be using this information to update your master list?
Yes, we have an Avionics app that you use to ping all the moorings we could find around the island, you know, kind of most, a lot of them I knew, a lot of them I didn't kind of backtrack and going to be there. So I'm familiar. But whose moorings are, the applications come in, I go back and try and ping these moorings again and get a name on them. Originally, I think, I originally pinged two hundred and seven moorings back in two thousand and nineteen or twenty. There was probably, I think, a hundred and eighty names on file. There's probably twenty-five, thirty moorings that have never registered. I've gone through the file that we just have probably seventy-five to eighty inactive files that people have moved or passed away and just kind of put those in active file. But now as things are flushing out, information's coming in, it looks like there's about two hundred and twelve individual moorings, probably people go to claim, pay any fees on.
Sounds great. And just let me get a little more, Richard. Is there anything else, Dana, Ted, that you think you might want to look at in the future? Anything, anything that any concerns?
I have no.
No one's come to you and said, gee, we'd love to see this?
No, no, and if someone has an issue, we certainly would like to hear it and we'll get together and work on it. All of the work that went into the ordinance, the rewriting, a lot of that came when Ted took over as the harbor master. He saw some things that for him to do his job, we might want to do, get some clarity on that. So we literally went from start to finish with it. And thankful that the town boarded back in, aboard a new one in, I should say.
It hasn't updated over twenty years. There's a few things that changed, and most of it was more definitions be revised. And every change that was recommended was a unanimous vote by the committee members. There wasn't one change that anybody had a negative vote on. So they're all approved unanimously.
Yeah, you've got to do a great job last year.
Yeah, yeah. I remember attending the meeting last year. You guys had a great amount of work.
About fifteen years ago, the Wright Committee had a vision and had laid out a, an area to the south of the point for a mooring plan. And the other idea was that there would be, you know, folks that would go out from the point where people could tie up their dings. But you know, that required the Department of Engineering approval, and we never took it any further. But you know, that might be something to consider downstream.
Certainly something to put in Ted's and Dana's head.
Well, if you do have a right landing mooring area ordinance that was approved, you know, when designated and there's GPS coordinates where that is, and the, I called the urban corps about that, said we have nothing on the bottom, they wouldn't have anything on it. I don't approve moorings like that. The town designated area, you want that set in moorings there, then that's in the purview of the town.
Well.
And that's kind of not if there are residents on the island that have no access to the water. That's kind of a I just get it set aside for, if they like the mooring privilege, that's a place they could set a mooring if they'd like to have a moor there.
Well, this is one of the problems we are, are record keeping. So I, I saw the moor, I saw that ordinance, looked at it, and talked with George about it. And, and George's comment was that it was never implemented. And, and his concern was that there wasn't, because they're about parking, again, because of the wormers there. And, and just concerned that there wouldn't be, it would be a park, parking problem. So he said it was never implemented.
I, I think Julie looked it up in G5, and I got a couple of notes with me, and I think she found where it was voted on, approved at a particular town.
Well, it was, I would have thought we, whether we like it or not, we had to.
Well, I mean, the, the parking is obviously an issue, but it is still first come, first served. You know, it can't be exclusively for one group or the other, although they have the highest, highest ease for it is the commercial fishing and the commercial activity for the farmers and the clambers, which is understandable.
And that might be more conducive to them. You know, whereas if there was access to moorings, more people using moorings or park there.
Yeah, it's a potential for that, my question.
Do a little research just to see if that was voted on and check that out. Any other thoughts from you two? Thank you both for coming.
You're welcome.
Now you can go home if you want, or you can stay for the rest. Thanks, too, Dennis. All right, now we'll back up to the, the budget review, which we've been working on for several weeks now, where we just look at different aspects of the budget, sort of in preparation for the the warrant items and looking to see what we have and what needs to come forward. So tonight, we're going to look at admin budget. So you want to take it?
Yeah, so wanted to go over the kind of salaries section. Now with some questions and get a little feedback. But I want to start first off with, with really some of our administrative costs and talk about those and, and where it looks like they could be headed. Nothing too out of the ordinary until we get down to schools, which is going to be more expensive. And the county budget, which is going to be more expensive. But so I, I, what I'm doing is showing people online, I didn't make copies because I didn't really want to circulate a lot of this because the numbers are still very, very soft. So I'll talk it out. If you want to take notes. So one of our expenses is the CAI digital tax maps that Dennis referred to. We had been paying about three thousand dollars. It went up. So we, so far this year paid thirty-one hundred dollars. I believe they're raised their charge to thirty-seven hundred. So that, that'll be a slight increase for the, for the tax maps. We also have another administrative cost, the animal control contract. Because we've had some issues with, really with the dogs, we've established a contract with the Lincoln County Sheriff's Department to provide animal control officer services. We budgeted last year thirty-two hundred dollars. So far this year, we spent about thirteen hundred dollars. So less than half of that. Still got two months to go. But not knowing for sure what we're going to do, I still think we might still plan for thirteen hundred dollars. I should say, one of the things that's important to remember about the town budgets is that we'll budget a certain amount. We don't really want to go over that amount. If we do go over that amount, we also do budget an overlay. If we do go over that amount, we also do budget an overlay account. So that's a separate account where we can take money out, because pretty much everything that we do has got to be approved by town meeting. So we can't spend money unless the town meetings approved it, the town has approved an overlay account, we can move that money from the overlay account to cover, uh, an overrun.
Can I ask one question? What happens, so in the instance of like the animal control? If you budget thirty two and the town approves thirty two, what happens if we only spend eighteen hundred dollars for the year? What happens to that extra?
Why don't you ask that question? Thank you.
Yes.
Because what, what it means is, uh, we, the money goes into surplus. So at the end of the year, it, it will go into technically surplus, unappropriate or unallocated surplus. Uh, so it's there, it's our, it's our bank account because we raised the money. Uh, and we can then use it for something else, so it doesn't go away. So not spending the money is not a problem, we don't lose it, we've still got it. Uh, and we can, we can, in a sense, what you often saw in, in the town, uh, meeting warrants was people talking about, we're going to carry forward. We'll carry forward the unexpended amount. Uh, technically, from the treasurer's perspective, the unexpended amount went into surplus and they just took the same amount again, out again for budgeting for next year. Uh, so the auditors really saying we should, we should really talk about it, i- if you don't spend the money, it goes in surplus, but you can pull that same amount out again for next year. So however you want to handle it, surplus is there if we, if we need it, um, to, to help keep down the taxes. Uh, so it's good for us to budget a little high. Because that way we don't, we don't want to have the problem of, of spending more than our overlay.
Can I ask one more question? Um, in terms of, so let's say the animal control budget is under what we. Like what we actually spend is eighteen hundred, so thirty two, and something for, you know, another category. Does that money stay, that surplus stay with the animal control, or does it go into like one giant pot of surplus?
It, uh, at the end of the year, it goes into one giant pot of surplus.
Okay, well, it could be used for anything.
Could lose anything, but, but again, because we're keeping track, we can say, okay, again, partially what we'll be doing, uh, this year is we'll be saying for a number of the, um. Accounts we want appropriate, we're going to take the surplus. So we don't have to use tax money, we can take the surplus, because we have, I, I mentioned, I guess last week, it's, I think it's four hundred and seventy five thousand dollars of surplus. And our orders say that we should have at least two hundred fifty thousand, so we're comfortable, we have money available if we, you know, it's a cushion. So do that, is that answering the questions?
Yes.
Well, thank you for asking, because that's, that's perfect. Uh, it's part of what is kind of the background of how we manage the budgets, so again, we, we'd like to be a little high. Um, but not, not way high, but, but not to worry, the money doesn't go away. So. Another, so I'm going to jump that into, uh, town office maintenance and operation accounts. Um, and, uh, and again, you don't see these on the warrant, the individual items, you see, uh, basically a summary level. So we actually can move things around between the individual line items, because the town approves the summary level. But how we break it down into individual pieces, it's, it's more what, what's, what makes sense. Uh, so overall, the town office maintenance and operation budget was last year by fifty nine thousand eight hundred and forty five dollars. Fifty nine thousand plus. How that broke down is we have a small amount set aside for legal advertising, three hundred and seventy five. Dollars, we spent so far this year nine hundred and fifty. So we've, we've overspent that line item, we haven't overspent the overall budget, what was approved by town meeting, but that line item we've overspent. So I'm going to recommend that we, we spend, we budget next year for a thousand dollars. One of the things we've, we've had more, um, public hearings. Um, you know, for, for the planning board's sake, for peers, uh, and if we do something where we want to have people come, we want to have money available to do advertising. That's what it's used for. Um, so a little increase will be, will be helpful, I think, just so we, we can, we're not going to be caught. With, with the, uh, illegal advertising. Um, a larger expense is the, uh, that where we provide for computer support. Uh, primarily to purchase computer, so they, they provide support to us in terms of the software that the town office uses, the. Microsoft software, the storage, um, cloud storage. Uh, as well as providing some technical assistance, so we. Budgeted this year fifteen thousand one hundred and seventy dollars, uh, we spent almost that much. Uh, I don't know how much more we're going to be spending this year, need to spend, so I'm, I'm guessing maybe fifteen hundred and. Fifteen thousand five hundred, so a slight increase, I think, would be, would be, uh, judicious for computer tech. Uh, and again, with computer things, they generally don't go down in cost. You find, we find something else that we, if you want to use. Uh, dues is three thousand, I, we'd like to propose thirty one hundred dollars, which again, there might be a slight increase in dues. Uh, that we pay, uh, we, we pay dues to different professional associations, uh, for the staff. Uh, election expenses, we budgeted twenty five hundred. Um, we've spent twelve hundred and eighty five, so we spent about half of that. Uh, but I think we should still spend twenty five hundred, or I'm going to defer to, uh, to April as our town clerk. And when it's something to do with the, uh, the town meeting or, or town, uh, election expenses, I defer to what the, the town clerk needs to do. I said, sorry.
Oh, my question.
You don't need, it's not today. Yeah, no, no, no.
But Julie, you have a comment?
I do have a comment on that. I would start to increase election expenses. Because this is the twenty three, twenty four, um, election, so you'll be going in, this will also cover, um. Next June, and next June is a presidential primary. And so you will also have more expenses. As well, potentially.
Yep.
Um, so you'll also need to probably have more staff as well. And, um. There'll just probably be more, so some more expenses that you may want to consider for the election.
We'll talk to.
Talk to April, but I'm just, I'm just wanting to touch that up on mine.
Yep.
I concur.
That's good. Uh, another relatively large expense, expense is the insurance that the town pays. Uh, again, to MMA as part of their insurance trust, uh, we're paying, we are, we budgeted, uh, twelve thousand dollars. So far, we've only paid nine thousand dollars, but I think we're getting, again, since we've got two months left in the year. Um, I'm thinking twelve thousand is still probably a good number to use. Leans, uh, this is where the, the cost of placing leans on, on properties where the tax, the, the, the properties have to pay their taxes. Uh, we budgeted two thousand, we spent seven hundred and twenty nine dollars. Um, so, which is good, we didn't spend a lot on, on leans, but you never know, so probably two thousand is still a good amount to, to have for coverage. Office supplies, we budgeted seven thousand, we spent, uh, forty two hundred. Again, that's going to fluctuate, we just ordered some more that doesn't, has shown up in, into these actuals, so I still say about seven thousand for office supplies. We have the internets from Spectrum, uh, and budgeted twelve hundred. Uh, I think that's going to be about where we come out as an annual cost, the spectrum, uh, for, for the internet, we have unfortunately have to pay the business. Uh, fee level for service. Uh, for hosting, uh, we've had, um, very little hosting costs. Uh, and, and in some years, we haven't paid anything for the hosting. Um, the, what we budgeted was a hundred and ten dollars. Um, but we're going to be changing our hosting service, it was Pedro Gamaris, uh. Pedro is, is discontinuing his, his, his service, so I'm saying we probably need to look at about four hundred, and we need to maybe do some, some. Uh, exploratory, see what the cost is going to be, but I think for now, putting it up four hundred dollar plug number. Um, postage, fifteen hundred dollars. Um, we spent about half of that, I'd still say keep it about fifteen hundred. Seemed like a, I, we never can tell what we might need for postage. Uh, the annual meeting expenses, another one where I'm going to, uh, defer to the town clerk, we budgeted fifteen hundred. Uh, we spent over a thousand, um, I'm guessing that two thousand might be a better. Uh, number to, to look at, but again, look at what, what you, you cannot, don't need it now, but.
Well, there's a weird accounting thing, and Julie might know more than me, I think we. We'd pay for this year's town meeting with the following year's budget, is that correct? So like you spent a lot of it last town meeting, that's why we're so close to the end of that budget. It happened so close to the end of the fiscal year that we use the next year's budget to cover the previous year's town meeting. And.
Cause it's ended June.
Right, right, yeah, you also have to account for, are there going to be any special town meetings? And.
And we should, I mean, plan, we don't have to do it, but it's nice to plan to have it.
But in the past, they weren't planned for in the budget. As much, so you need to plan for that.
So again, that's an expense, I think we, we want to go up from fifteen hundred. Uh, but again, I, I know April can, can research it and see what she thinks is appropriate. Uh, training, uh, we budgeted fifteen hundred dollars for training. And what training means is there are MMA provided classes or, uh, training sessions provided by the different professional groups. As well as training for trio, the software that, uh, the, the office uses. And we'll be doing, I think, a, a fair amount of training. Already, uh, A- April, Ashley, and indeed Donna and myself have been, been availing ourselves of some of the training. Um, so we've, we've, uh, of the fifteen hundred, we've already spent, uh, uh, twelve, twelve hundred. And more expenses will be coming in the end of the year, so I would think we, we, we'll say, be safer in doubling that to, to three thousand. And that would allow us a chance to, uh. Make sure that everyone is a good understanding of, of the nuances of the, of the jobs. Um, electricity expense, uh, budgeted twenty five hundred. Uh, we've actually spent a lot less, which is, uh, interesting, uh, so I'm not sure, I, I penciled in three thousand, maybe three thousand's too much. Have to go back and look at the, look at the actuals, uh, as we, you, you probably all know from your home expenses, uh. The electricity costs keep going up, we just have another jump this year, so, uh, don't expect they're going to go down next year. But are they going to go up that much? I'm not sure, so I'll extrapolate and see. Uh, heating, uh, thirty five hundred, uh, we spent twenty six eighty. I'd say still keep it around thirty five hundred. Uh, maintenance, various maintenance expenses, we've almost spent that budget this year. Um, so two thousand, it was two thousand, we spent, uh, over eighteen hundred, we may need more than two thousand for next year. The, uh, trash collection kind of outsourced outdoor stuff, um. It's been fifteen hundred, uh, we spent less than seven hundred, so that might be something that could come down. Um, telephone, we've spent two thousand. Um, pardon, we budgeted two thousand, we spent thirteen hundred. Um, but I'm, I'm not sure, uh, about the telephone expense, it might be safe again to keep it at two thousand. And lastly, we have security, this is for, for the Cunningham Security Service, we budgeted four hundred ninety, we've almost spent all of that. Um, so I'm saying maybe best to go up to five hundred, a little, little increase. Uh, I know it's, it's kind of hard to follow along, just re, reading, reading numbers off. The bottom line comes down to, uh, again, what was budgeted last year was fifty nine hundred and eighty four dollars, fifty nine thousand. Eight hundred and forty five dollars, and, uh, if, if the numbers I've plugged in, uh, total up to sixty three. Sixty, sixty three thousand seven hundred, a less than four thousand dollar increase. Um, so. Room, room, I think, to, to, to look at that and maybe take that down some more, but we expect that we would go up a little bit from, from last year's numbers.
Yeah, sixty two would be. Almost eight percent.
For anyone who's, um. I'm going to take a peek at the chat as soon as any questions on that. For those of you following along from home, if, uh, you want to raise a, a question, I'll take a, I'll try to look periodically and, uh, and see. Just put, put your question in the chat. Um, now going, more other expenses, we have a, a town office reserve of sixty five hundred dollars. And we have not spent any of that this year. We think we, we'd like to, uh, replace the office computers. In, in some cases, they're seriously underpowered, which, uh, affects the performance of, of both the systems and, and the staff. So it would be a good time to replace the office computers. Uh, that's five office computers, uh, the three staff, then we have a computer that we use to host the trio system. And all the tax in, information, as well as a, a computer that's used by the select board. So same five computers, so that could be, um. I haven't gone out to price computers, uh, they could be in the vicinity of six thousand dollars for the five, could be five thousand dollars for the five. But, uh, we could, uh, take that potentially out of reserves or out and out of, uh, tax appropriation. Uh, we've had a line item for town record preservation, this is where Gay has been working with. Uh, uh, folks in, in Massachusetts, where they'll make a, uh, a, a digital image of, of a, of a document. Such as our, 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 our town clerk record books, and, and also make one that's, uh, a, 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 a copy. So we have something that we can then use and then preserve the original copy of those town records. So we've been spending twenty five hundred a year. Uh, and I'd like to re- recommend, continue to do that until we've, uh, preserved all the, the, the over town records. Uh, there's a ten thousand dollar contingency, again, that's where money that we want to have, what we need. We have an overrun surplus, we have the month funds to, to cover it, so I continue to have that ten thousand. Uh, a large expense i- is our legal expenses, uh, last year we voted, uh, for an additional amount of money. To cover the Baker Road litigation, uh, overall, we, we voted to have sixty thousand dollars set aside for legal. Some of the money we spend for legal is used for things like reviewing contracts, uh, or getting legal opinions from our town attorney. Uh, but substantial now we expect is going to be used in the Baker Road litigation. Uh, the status of that now is that, uh, we've, we've expended about ten thousand dollars so far, uh, on that. Uh, and the next, uh, activity is going to be a mediation session in mid-June. Uh, with the, uh, the, uh, other party, uh, and the select board and our attorneys, to try to reach some type of resolution. Uh, so we, and the, the expenses are probably going to go into next year, so I'd like to say that we want to pretty much roll over everything that we have. Uh, about fifty thousand dollars into next year, so use the money that we didn't spend this year, it's going to go in surplus, just take it back out again and use it for next year. Uh, still for the Baker Road, don't know that it's going to cost any more than what we originally planned. Uh, we'll, we'll check in with the attorneys a little later, just to make sure that there isn't something that they, uh, gotcha, yeah. But, uh, currently that's where we stand with that, and that's, that's where the larger individual account, uh, charges. Another one is the, uh, transfer station cost, uh, we pay almost fourteen percent of the transfer station. Um, last year that worked out to be a hundred thousand dollars and a hundred thousand six hundred and forty seven dollars. Uh, this year, tentatively, they estimate it's going to be a hundred and eight thousand dollars, so about an eight percent increase. Uh, in the transfer station cost. The school. The, uh, uh, education, uh, assessment is going to go from eight hundred and eighty eight thousand. Uh, to, uh, nine hundred and forty six thousand, at least in the current, current budget. Is this, is there any changes that you're aware of, or anything likely to change, uh, Richard, before we vote on it? I saw we just got a ninety two thousand dollar grant, the, the, the region got, got, uh, a, a grant recently.
Yeah, but I think they. We've made some more adjustments, I don't have that number with me right now, so that has gone down just a tad.
I remember seeing that, yep.
So I don't think it's going to, you know, I, I always hope, but I was not expecting it to make a difference really in, in our, in our costs. So that's another big expense, the one big expense, unfortunately, I didn't have handy, um, is the county tax, it's usually our second largest. Expense, individual line item, uh, it was three hundred and fifty six thousand last year. My recollection, I think it's going to be around three hundred and eighty thousand, but I don't have that number handy, I know it went up. Um, and that's, as you've probably been reading the paper, that's the theme song, uh, throughout, uh. Uh, the towns and, and counties is the, the, the cost has gone up this year.
Ten percent.
Yeah. So this is, this is, uh, the, the administrative cost, um. And overall, uh, if I plug in the additional cost for the schools, it came up to, uh, sixty-eight thousand in additional cost so far amongst those items that I talked about so far. Plus the, I don't have the county tax factored in, so that could be as much as a hundred thousand more, um. Uh, until we, unless we, we can do some more, um, cutbacks. The other major area I wanted to talk to was, uh, the salary cost, salary and stipend cost. So last year, we did an, an upgrade in census salaries uh, in ours, uh, and so last year, the, uh, budget is approved by, um, town meeting was one hundred and eleven thousand and nine hundred and eight dollars for salaries. Uh, since that, we also approved additional, uh, funds for, uh, a road commissioner stipend and, uh, additional funds that we put aside, uh, if we needed them for, for, to cover, uh, uh, additional funds for town clerk. So actually, it came up to a total of, uh, a hundred and twenty thousand, four hundred and eight dollars last year. What? And, and you notice, we have not spent, um, we've only spent seven, seventy-three thousand so far of, of that, um, so we've, we've, uh, underspent, considerably underspent, a lot of that is because the stipends have not been taken. So many people wait to the end of the fiscal year to take their stipend. Uh, and so, you know, that there was twenty-six thousand in stipends, only eight thousand's been claimed so far, so there's eighteen thousand left. So that's one reason why, uh, the actuals are so far down. Uh, but again, don't expect that we'll use up all of that amount. Uh, but if that's a, kinda gives us a base of a hundred and twenty thousand uh, from, from, uh, la- uh, from this year. If we talk about salary increases, uh, traditionally, we've done a one point seven five percent salary increase. And I, I can't speak to the, 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 why the reason, it was a uh, good to, I think, to give people an annual salary increase, it's not a lot. Uh, in the past, I'm not sure that you ever really covered inflation. Uh, the cost of, uh, goods going up. This year, we know the costs have gone up a lot for people. So I, I laid out, um, a little some, some options of what the cost could be. So if we did, uh, a, a salary increase of one point seven five percent, uh, the new salary total would be, uh, a hundred and twenty-two thousand, five hundred and fifteen. So roughly about, uh, you know, two percent more. If it went to three percent, it would be a hundred and twenty-four thousand. Five percent, a hundred and twenty-six thousand, seven percent, a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, you kinda see the pattern, we're going up two thousand for every, every, uh, about, about a percent every, uh, uh, every, uh, thousand dollars. So, concern is that we, we treat, uh, staff fairly. And that we, we adequately compensate staff, and part of that is gonna come with the, uh, uh, the annual salary increase. So we're concerned about making sure that we do that. We know coming out of this, this last year and seeing a number of towns, not just ourselves, uh, have turnover in staff, that, uh, salaries were a, a major factor, is for some towns. And so the, uh, the rate of pay for town staff has gone up, uh, throughout the county. So we wanna make sure that we stay competitive. Uh, we wanna make sure that salaries, uh, are competitive for our staff. So that's a factor in looking at the, the amount of percentage of the salary increase. We had budgeted twelve thousand for taxes, I didn't try to figure that out, but the, the taxes next year will be driven by the salary levels. As we decide, decide them. And I did mention one of the other items is the assessor. Uh, this last year, we had a contract with our, uh, certified assessor for four thousand dollars, we budgeted, uh, a lot more than that. We don't yet have a new contract with our certified assessor, so that's still a TBD. Uh, we need to get that done. So what I'd like to, uh, propose, and, and the select board voted last week, uh, coming out of our executive session, that we would like to explore offering, uh, medical benefits to town office staff. Uh, not quite sure what the level, we, we'll do some work on that. Uh, we have seen what the costs are for the, for the MMA or insurance. So, uh, depending upon the, the, the program and the deductibles, it can be over two thousand dollars for their family. Uh, medical insurance a month, uh, for that. Uh, and, uh, for an individual, it's over a thousand dollars a month. So, benefits will be a, 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 a substantial cost, but we believe we need to, um, start providing benefits. Um, and we pay, uh, part of the benefits for, for our staff, town office staff.
Have you, uh, done any comparison of towns our size as to salaries for the various town, uh, office staff? And, uh, also looked at what those towns are paying as far as health benefit?
We started to, so collected, uh, actually, Ashley, our treasurer, has collected some information for a number of towns.
Okay.
Uh, and we have some of the examples of, of local Lincoln County towns. Uh, uh, again, I, the, the case of all know where they're, they're salary, paying more now in salary, and also, uh, paying for benefits. So, but that is part of, when we come to town meeting, we owe the town a good explanation and comparison to make the case. But I guess saying that, that's another factor when we're looking at the, the budgeting, that we have to say that they, they, we expect to be paying additional expense for, for medical benefits. So, any, any questions or any further comments about, I guess, the administrative expenses?
Just to, just to continue on that same storyline. I'm sure Davis Carter and Luke Bayard are all provide their office people with benefits. All of us started doing it, Dresden has nature paying more. Westport's kinda behind the card on this one. As far as I'm concerned, with everybody else away and down. And we need to take, you get good people, you gotta hang on. And it always says, make that happen.
I think we've got to have a equitable looking at salary increases and you know, medical as well, and what that package together will be. You know, I think that's gonna be a hard sell to say, oh, we're gonna give the staff five percent, and we're gonna give them medical.
Yeah, this, yeah, we're just having discussions about this and, and trying to figure out what, what some of those options might be. Cause you're right, you know, would be nice to offer five percent in full medical benefits, but that's something that we can't afford, so.
I, I think one of these also, you know, that, that I think is our plus, is we've been working really sort of flexible, uh, so it works to where people are able to work from home. Trying to be as flexible as we can be to make it, uh, there was, so a lot of, other things that are benefits, hopefully for working, working for the town.
Yeah.
But ultimately, we know how expensive, uh, medical benefits are, or medical, uh, expenses are, medical insurance. Well, I don't see any, anything in the chat. So I, I think, uh, that's pretty much what I wanted to cover, is lay that out. In two weeks, uh, I'd like to cover the rest of the, well, of the, the budget items, mostly the, kind of the odds and ends, town committee expenses, uh, the social service organization expense, uh, requests. So we'll do that and, uh, and try, try to wrap up the last of the budget items, uh, in two weeks on the fifteenth.
And again, I'd like to thank, uh, you, Jeff, for doing this, because, uh, I think it really, no matter who's on, uh, whether there are a ton of people or just three or four people, but to hear, um, how the budget works and how it's, um, sort of broken apart, um, at least sharing our thinking about it ahead of time. So thank you, Jeff.
All right, I'd like to move on to, uh, roads, um, Jim? Anything to? A little bit of rain yesterday?
Rain, uh, muskrat.
I saw a muskrat today, is that a thing? Yeah.
Yeah, it's a real thing.
Right next to me in the culvert, I was walking and it was just swimming along. Were you swimming in the culvert? No, I was walking the muskrats.
Well, I, I did see, oh, a, a woman with her two kids over on the east shore road by an area where the culvert was going pretty slow, I'm thinking, why, and then she parked her car there. Why are you here? So maybe, maybe she was looking for the muskrats, I don't know, but.
Or maybe they were going swimming.
I was, I just took her to find out.
Uh, there's some damage on post office road. The, the troubled culvert. It's trouble, it's relatively new, but it's troubled for a couple different reasons. And it has washed the road, cause the water went on the road. And it had, I got a call from Jim Dutton, it washed part of his driveway. The town can't spend money on private driveways. The town caused it. So I don't know how we're gonna deal with that yet, I had, I just called to Jim briefly. Through a few winds on the road, I've been down here four times Sunday, twice Saturday. I was down here five thirty this morning. I can't stop the rain, all I can do is try and invert it. And there is some damage, and I think it's relatively minor dollar wise. And I'm gonna get it. The post office road and, and the wash on the side of the doggy road is really the only two critical things that I've seen that need immediate prevention. Being spent on either way. It's polluted with the culvert by Jim Dutton's, is it's gonna be dug up. And put the inlet in, up on the inlet end. And put the outlet in, that will be outlet in. So things don't get clogged up in there. Uh, that's what's happening, sticks getting in there and then everything catches on that stick. And it's right about the middle of the road, and it happens. That's why you see me that day with all that scrapping going in there. So that's gonna be addressed at some point, but I don't think we're gonna get six point one inches of rain in twelve hours in the near future, we still hoping of.
Are, are you gonna be able then to, uh, so, soon be able to, to get so people, it's passable again?
Yes, yes, I'll make. I can't, but I can get somebody that can, cause we got disaster over across the river. Not a disaster, but right now, presently, I have three people, three couples stranded. And they can't even walk up the road because it's a twenty foot gully, it's about eight feet deep of rushing water. So, it's Thompson's, Richard, Easton Yell House, is, is one, is one of them. So for them to leave their house, it's about a full mile walk, river road through the woods, that's the only way they can leave the house right now.
Sounds like their road is a river road now.
Yeah, it is, it is, uh. There's two roads, two causeways about fifteen hundred, two thousand feet apart. One of them's real level on purpose, so when the water was over, it was over, it don't wash one particular spot, well, when you've got four hundred feet of water going over the road, the next culvert downstream, five footer, and it's going, it's hundreds of feet down. So, that being said, I don't want that to happen down here, and, and so what we have, I consider pretty minimal.
Pat's gonna hand up, by the way.
Unfortunately, all that rain washed a lot of the sand off the road down onto the parking lot again.
I wondered about that, uh, for Ray Lanning, but.
Hoping to get that, you know, picked up as, as far as in front of my house, so I wouldn't have that problem, but I ran out of steam at four o'clock in the afternoon.
Yeah, cause you just did that last weekend, right? Yeah.
We can, I'll be gone Saturday, leaving, leaving for the mountain on Friday.
No, I was actually looking to see where you had your hand up, so, someone has their hand up?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. I was just wondering, um, if the first culvert on Sawtill Road is going to be replaced this year or not, because the, it's overflowing down there today? I didn't know if that's on the, on the plan for this year. If Jim knows that or not?
Well, that culvert, we had, we just had six inches of rain, so I'm sure it's probably overflowing. The ones I named lenses, I did have planned for replacement because that hill uh, needs some work, obviously, after this. But I will look at that and I will make an assessment, cause if we're gonna be down and doing work, I'd rather do do it all while we're right there.
Yeah, okay.
Culvert needs to be, uh, upgraded to a bigger service.
This is the one that's actually before the hill, it's, um.
Right, it's the first one in there, I know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I think it's a steel culvert, and if it's a steel culvert, it's no good because it's over twenty-five years old, it's rusted up.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll get it back now, I'll, I'll make that determination.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
One of the things I, I think, uh, on this, it, last twenty-four hours events, uh, indicated, uh, is that, it, we, we don't have a good way to let people know when we get a, a, a serious problem. So with the post office road, it was, got so bad, uh, this morning that it, you know, it's not passable. So, uh, how do we let people know? Uh, that they shouldn't be going down post office road, cause it's often the, you know, the easiest way to get. You live on, uh, uh, that's, that part of West Shore Road, uh, that's how I often get out. So, uh, we, I think we need some way to, to, to be able to let people know um, that, uh, there's an outage of that sort.
Times are ineffective, because if I put a road closure at the beginning of post office room and, and, uh, April comes home and sees a sign, she's gonna think she can't get to her house, when actually she can. So, times are very difficult, I think it's up to Facebook and all that evil stuff.
And we had talked last week about, uh, broadband committee expanding and figuring out how to do exactly those issues, cause that's exactly the problem.
I think we had talked last week about EMAs code red, but that requires a lot of people signing up and not everybody's.
Yep.
But one of the things that happened was whenever there was a road closure, Jimmy would email me and I would then use that email newsletter, that, that, the MailChimp. And we could email the MailChimp, get it onto Facebook, get it into the MailChimp, so it's emailed to everybody at that time. So if, I'm just suggesting that if it's an emergency, if someone can get into the MailChimp account and email to the mailing list, at least whoever's been in that lift will at least get it right then and there. Just do emergency road closure. Ideally, we'd like to get code red, but, uh, from an EMA standpoint, but that's gonna take time and education to get people. And then getting it up onto Facebook and sharing it into the Facebook group as well upon the town page. And also letting, one of the things is communicating with us at EMA, because one, we have to get it into the, um, EMA system. Because getting it into the EMA system is really important. But also, we can, I can then also get it onto the fire department's page as well, I can get onto the fire department website and the fire department's page too. But having people send us pictures as well, because if we have pictures, we get it into the EMA system, and if we have to write in reports to fill out any Form Sevens with FEMA, we have it all documented, so if this ever comes to a time that we may come and need to get reimbursements or anything, we already have it documented and pictures, and picture the time sensitive too, because if we need further help from the county or anywhere else, from CMP, we get prioritized by our pictures. So, but I think using the, the MailChimp. the mailchimp system is the fastest way.
Yeah.
And if that's the case, if only a small section, you can um hone it in so that people would, you can still get home if you, unless you are.
Right. So you're every people are on post office? And just email them?
Yeah.
Because, yeah, can pull them up. So Jim, text me if there's a washover or something, and I'll post it. And then for code red, I was going to put a call out in the next newsletter to get people to sign up for that. Do we have like a nice online link or sign up for them or?
We do. I can send that to you on the E M A site and um we can probably pull and it was in two years ago, it was in the annual report that you're looking up, but I actually had the stuff from the E M A website. We can do that.
Okay, any other thoughts about roads?
I think the folks on uh Bay Shore are going to be very happy that that road worked out.
Yeah, I anybody at this point gets anywhere down on the road.
Yeah.
Driveways is uh.
I could see all, you were talking about the problems and 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 this storm, the next thing about the storm was it, we had, if we had a a a potential problem, it became an actual problem. Uh all along, I think on Bay Shore, uh you see culverts just get overwhelmed and it's amazing.
The weeds down there. You don't build a house from roof down. You don't build a road from roof down. That's why I'm adamant about ditching the culverts. I don't care if it's like a cobblestone road or as rough as a wagon trail at this point in time because we have serious deficiencies in ditching and culverts on the side and that's where it all starts. And this rainstorm here more than proves my point.
All right, uh any correspondence? I have nothing.
I did uh email to the uh the engineer that's been in charge of the work on the bridge. And I thought, oh, maybe they were done because they haven't been around. No, uh they they pulled them back uh and their their next focus is going to be more on the Wisconsin side. So there's still, they still got more to do. They just had to go someplace else, I guess, uh multiple emergencies. Uh so we still will have that going on again sometime. I didn't expect they're going to be doing the painting. So expect to see the Flyers back as a factor.
We just finally ten minutes early. Every time you got to go off the island.
Started on the easy side. Yeah, so it's not going to be so easy.
Yeah, yeah. All right, we're going to move to admin items. And April, you had a um and and.
Yes, so minimum wage has gone up from twelve seventy-five to thirteen eighty as of the beginning of twenty twenty-three. Um so I have a request to raise the election worker pay rate from the previous state minimum wage, twelve seventy-five to the current state minimum wage of thirteen eighty.
So is that a motion?
Yes, I guess so. Do I make motion?
Well, you're recommending, you're recommending. So you're recommending that we uh increase the election worker rate to thirteen eighty?
To thirteen eighty?
Yes.
Okay, I I would make that motion.
Okay, then I will second it.
Okay.
Uh all in favor?
Right.
All right, okay. Any other legal uh or admin business?
Um, no, I could briefly talk about election stuff.
Okay, sure.
Let's see what happened. So absentee ballot application is still available. Absentee ballots themselves and voting will start May sixteenth. The R S U twelve notice for their budget meeting went up. That's going to be May twenty-fourth. Um so Westport Island residents are welcome to go and vote back up. That in Chelsea, yep. Um so it's all in the notices. They're in all the kiosks, um the one in the entryway, the one outside, the one down by the town hall. And that's about it really, printing ballots.
Well, I guess other other legal business maybe.
Okay. All right, we'll go on to other legal business.
One of the the, I guess, a couple of residents who again expressed their concern about the uh down dump property. And uh and we had the the advice from um the consultants who worked on, again, that the town has a liability, but like, what I'd like to do is I'd like to actually get the the town attorney formally go on record to make sure that is the understanding. Um so uh I'd like to do that. And the second thing I'd like to do um is is to uh, you know, I'm going to, I'll tell the town attorney about the the potential expenses now for the litigation, just where we stand now in the process. So I do have a better uh in estimate of what we need for that. Uh the third thing is uh I'd like to uh uh communicate with the uh district uh D O T engineer, uh firm testing engineer uh to get a uh traffic study done of the main road to look at uh how we can do some better speed control. Uh again, we have, I did uh request uh uh increased surveillance from from sheriff. So we'll hopefully be able to see that. I think uh they're they're stretched in terms of their their ability to come in and uh do that. But I've asked at least that they 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 do do that and try to get some some attempt to cut down on the amount of speeding. That's the key thing. We want to get enough speeding. There's enough places along the main road where people have specifically said, I got a problem, I and 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 can can reference it. That we can then talk, I think, with the the engineer as well and see what could be done. Uh to the signage, is there something else that we can do that might help to uh to encourage people to reduce their speed?
Jim, you need to add speed bumps.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. Two things, the day I was cold patching, the sheriff stopped down, I was way down by Herman's Point at the end of the left up there. He stopped and what brings you to down here? And he's like, oh, just traffic control. I said, no, this is a good spot. Spend the afternoon. He kind of chuckled. He made a presence. So I give him credit. That's the first time I've seen a sheriff on Westport that wasn't called down here in a long time. The second thing is, I got that letter from the D O T saying they're going to pay the main road. We can call them up and cancel that. That will help with the speeding, but it will not carry it.
I don't know about that. Okay.
That's.
That's your recommendation?
Make the recommendation. It's just an option.
Okay, okay.
I don't make recommendations like that. I wouldn't get elected here.
We probably use a yellow flashing light above Perry Road because that the number of bulbs falls there and.
They could cure that, but it would cost money. I mean, they could very easily cure that problem there, but they'll never do it.
Yeah. I really liked it. They came by with a sweeper and flapped the sand out of there.
They did not.
Very rowdy, but yeah. Because they, you know, people leaving there with the sand there, they're spinning their wheels.
At least that mirror, I was so grateful when that mirror went up because I think about people making that left turn. So it helped a little bit.
They can very easily blast some of that off there and get some visibility down the hill or blast the ditch even so you can see that one.
Yeah.
But that they'll they'll just keep painting it what they're going to do this summer. I think paint has more consistency than the hot top they use on this because it's a paint maker. Don't last. There's no structure to it. That's why they do it every seven years.
All right, if there aren't any other questions or concerns, then we're gonna, uh I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
So great, thank you.